Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All board members are present this evening? All right, and next up is the open forum. And in accordance to our Board Policy 203, a 15-minute time period is set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment of the board agenda. So I have three this evening, and first up is Daniel Tragiano. If you could just come up and state your name and address and then...
Yeah, thank you so much. My name is Daniel Tragiano, I live in Savage. I'm a family medicine physician and a population health consultant. Our family has lived in Savage for about 21 years, and our children graduated from Prior Lake High School. As a doctor and a parent, and just as a concerned citizen, I have been increasingly concerned about the intersection of climate change, climate pollution, and human health. And diesel school buses that our children ride in sit squarely at that intersection. The science is really clear on this. School buses that are filled with diesel fumes are harmful to children's health, their academic performance, and the environment. Diesel emissions contain ultra-microscopic particulate matter, PM2.5, and black carbon, which are not only breathed into children's lungs, they are small enough to pass right into the pulmonary blood vessels and circulate throughout the body, causing numerous systemic health problems. Children riding in school buses are inhaling up to 15 times the amount of exhaust compared to someone riding in the car next to them. 14% of children have asthma, and inhaled diesel emissions are direct lung irritants causing respiratory irritation and severe asthma attacks. Diesel emissions are known carcinogens, increasing the risk of lung cancer, bladder cancer, and leukemia, including childhood leukemia. Diesel exhaust causes cardiovascular diseases, heart attacks, strokes. And really concerning is the maternal exposure. Maternal exposure to diesel fumes is associated with birth anomalies, learning disabilities in those newborns, ADHD, and autism. Recent studies have also shown that high exposure to levels of diesel exhaust on school buses improves academic performance. A large, multi-year randomized control trial involving over 700,000 students in Georgia showed significant improvement in academic achievement in children who were selected to ride in cleaner buses. This was especially true in elementary school kids and in their English test scores. Another really well-done study at the University of Michigan showed an 8% lower absentee rate and improved actual pulmonary function tests in students riding in those cleaner buses. That was especially true for those 14% of kids who have asthma. The transportation sector in the U.S. and in Minnesota is the highest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States. And diesel buses contribute over 5.2 million, 5.2 million tons of carbon pollution every year. This year, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is awarding $3 million in grants to purchase electric school buses, and future legislation is being proposed for more funding in the years to come. As part of the American Jobs Plan, President Biden has an explicit goal, right on his website, to ensure that all new school buses are zero-emission, 100% electric, and American-made by 2030. And Congress, as part of that, is proposing $25 billion, with a "B," $25 billion dollars of funding for schools committed to transitioning to electric school buses. Now, how are we in Prior Lake and Savage schools preparing for the federal and state dollars that are sure to be coming? As a first step, what I'm asking each of the school board members to do is to take a pledge that every ISD 719 student will ride in a healthier and cleaner electric school bus by 2040. It's a simple ask, given all that's occurring. Your public commitment will ensure that Prior Lake-Savage area schools are on the front end of receiving federal and state grants that are sure to be coming. Our kids in this community and our planet deserve a world without diesel emissions in our school buses. I'm going to send a follow-up email. Please reach out to me anytime if you're willing to sign that pledge, or if you have any questions or want to learn more about this issue.
Thank you. All right, and next up is Bill Markert. If you could just state your name, address, and your comments.
My name's Bill Markert. I'm a retired taxpayer that lives in Credit River in the school district. During the past two public forum portions of the school board meetings, I've submitted questions that were read, or partially read by this board. It seems that my questions and requests have either been largely ignored or the responses I did receive privately were not responsive to my questions. Why won't the school board be upfront with taxpayers and clearly tell how much money the school district is spending to train its employees and post the materials being used to what I believe is indoctrinating our children in toxic social justice ideologies such as the concepts of equity versus equality, critical race theory, anti-racism, white fragility, systemic racism, white privilege, implicit bias, and any other social justice term being used by the district? Since the school board recently approved a resolution to commit to developing anti-racism policies and programs, does that mean that the school district was in the past allowing racism in its then-existing policies and programs while receiving federal and state funds? I don't think so. At least, I hope that wasn't the case. Will you not share the costs the school district is incurring related to social justice training and indoctrination? Because, will you not share it because you've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on it? And while at the same time having to reduce the budget this year and reduce staff? The school board should be transparent and clarify the policies that are in place to ensure students are protected from political and racial ideological indoctrination at school. What are the safeguards for children? Please post them to their website. It's my belief that only parents should teach their children about activist causes if they so choose. Public institutions should not, because taxpayers such as myself pay your salaries, and many of us, like myself, do not believe in what you're exposing the children to. Also, the school board should clarify what policies are in place to protect the children from being exposed to the clothing that teachers are allowed to wear on school grounds or at school-sponsored events that depict racial activism. Things like Black Lives Matter, Humanize My Hoodies, or Coalition for Teachers of Color Conspirator t-shirts. Parents, this is to you, be wary of what the district and what the state is teaching your children, and get involved. Schools should be teaching reading, writing, and math, what is needed to get a job, not what is needed to become an activist. Public schools should not be in the business of teaching radical social justice theories that only hurt children by pitting them against one another, all because of the color of their skin. Parents, pull your kids from public education and stop funding the district if they won't stop this harmful indoctrination. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Anthony Heiser.
Hello, everybody. My name's Tony Heiser. I live at 17327 Wilderness Circle in Prior Lake. So I am here today to advocate on the topic of electric school buses. So, as far as my prepared statement, members of the board, thank you for the opportunities to speak in front of you today. My name is Tony Heiser, and I am a 15-year resident of Prior Lake. I come before the school district board today to ask for their commitment to utilize only electric school buses by 2040, whether in its own fleet or contracted. Professionally, I am the Business Development and Product Manager for commercial electric and hybrid vehicle applications and work for an industrial manufacturing shuckopee which produces the power electronic devices, or inverters, using these vehicle types, which include school buses as well as transit coach buses, yeah, coach buses, excuse me, and other commercial vehicles such as heavy-duty semi-trucks, garbage trucks, delivery vans, et cetera. As someone familiar with the industry, I can attest that commercial electric vehicles are no longer a novel idea. Rather, we are on the cusp of exponential growth, starting in the next few years. This is driven by two primary factors. One is cost, and second is government environmental regulations. And more recently, we can add a third probable driver, government infrastructure stimulus. In regards to costs, are electric school buses more expensive than diesel school buses? Yes, in terms of upfront costs. But is the total cost of ownership what should be considered? That is, factoring in comparative costs of maintenance and fuel or power over the lifetime of the vehicle. Here, electric vehicles have drastically fewer components, moreover, less moving parts, such as in a combustion engine, which reduce the maintenance cost, and likewise, the cost of electricity can provide savings as opposed to diesel fuel. An additional potential strategy to offset lifetime costs include vehicle-to-grid cooperation with power utilities, whereby the utility pays to store energy on idled vehicles for use during peak demand periods. This is a perfect opportunity for electric buses, which largely sit idle after typical close-of-business working hours and during summer times, which are times when the grid demand is at its highest. Furthermore, in terms of upfront costs, as the cost of batteries has declined drastically in recent years and economies of scale are being realized by manufacturers, the upfront costs of electric buses should continue to come down and narrow the price parity gap between electric and diesel buses. Additionally, in terms of offsetting upfront costs, there's a potential for state and federal subsidies from a variety of environmental and infrastructure programs, as well as potential rebates or pilot program subsidies from electric utilities. Why get started now? Early adopters have the most to gain. As electric school buses become increasingly economically feasible, demand will gain momentum, and thus, there will be competition for subsidies. In the case of potential pilot programs with utilities, lucrative subsidies may only be available for the first projects. Likewise, other subsidies could be available on a first-come basis as well. Aside from financial perspectives, from the financial perspective, the estimated lifetime of a school bus is 12 to 18 years. That means a diesel school bus purchased today will still be on the road in 2033 through 2039. To achieve the requested timeline for a fully electrified fleet by 2040, the initial steps must start soon. I believe this is an achievable goal. As a Coalition, or, excuse me, as a California Air Resources Board has approved regulation that sets a statewide goal for public transit agencies to gradually transition to 100% zero-emission bus fleets by 2040. Likewise, New York City has set a timeline for all city vehicles to be electric battery-powered by 2040, and city-operated school buses to be fully electrified by 2030. Where to start? As a final note, I'd like to point out that the school bus manufacturers offer resources for school districts in regards to roadmapping fleet electrification. I thank you for your time today, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Enrique. And I'm going to say this with joy, people. We do not have to have a roll call vote. Because we're all here and present, in person. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That passes 7-0. And on the consent agenda this evening, the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items. And tonight's consent agenda is the financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement from April 2021, building bond investment report, the monthly wire detail, the monthly health dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, the monthly ACH detail, approval of the school board minutes from the regular school board meeting on April 12th, and the study session on April 26th. Personnel items, candidates for employment, district retirements, resignations, terminations, and nonrenewals, and leaves of absence. And I will just make a note. We did get a number of retirements, again, this month. I did a quick add, and it's 152 years of very knowledgeable experience retiring. So I want to thank all those members, and I'll read their names. Jill Blair, special ed teacher. Megan Bloomquist, second-grade teacher. Lisa Delly, kindergarten teacher. Cheryl DeMette, Cheryl Holst. Maureen Johnson. Rita Savoy. Eve St. Main. And Tim Wentie. With that, do I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda?
So made.
Second.
Amy, second by Michael. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That passes 7-0. And the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. I missed that. I should do a quick. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of gifts?
No, that's a separate item.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a separate item. I always get messed up. Yeah, so do I have a motion to accept the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So made.
By Mary? Second?
Second.
By Jonathan. This is a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Next up is Laker Pride. Dr. Stallow.
Good evening. At Prior Lake-Savage area schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. That mission, in combination with our district theme, which is "We Are PLSAS Voices", is really the foundation of Laker Pride this evening. So right now, I would like to invite up next to me one of our newest district authors, sophomore, Samirta Deta, is a published author, a sophomore at Prior Lake High School, and we are thrilled that she's with us this evening. I told her that when we were out in the lobby talking, and as we think about that mission of helping kids reach their full potential. My goal has always been to be a published author, and I am not! So I know who my new mentor and who my new coach will be. We are so proud of you.
Thank you.
And we are so excited that you are here with us this evening so that we can not only recognize your talent, your drive, your ambition, but we can hear directly from you a little bit, if you're willing to share
Of course, thank you.
a little bit about your book. So with that, please share a little bit about your journey and your book.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Smriti, and I want to thank the district for giving me this incredible opportunity. And I have to thank my incredible teachers at Holmes and Prior Lake High School, because without their help and their guidance, I wouldn't be the person that I am today. And, well, I started writing this book in the beginning of quarantine, because I found myself with a lot of time, and I wanted to use that to my advantage. And, well, I originally had planned to write it for myself, but the more I was writing, I found that I was becoming increasingly addicted to it, and I couldn't put it down. And I really just wanted to share my story with others, because it just holds such a dear place in my heart. And especially the characters, I mean, while I was writing, they became my best friends, because I wasn't able to go outside and see my friends because of the pandemic. And I just really wanted people to get to know them in the way that I had. And I've always loved writing. I mean, you can ask my mom, I'm pretty sure she still has the copy of my attempt to write Harry Potter: Deathly Hallows Part III somewhere. I don't think it was good, you know, but I just, you know, I followed my dreams, and this book is the product of that. So I encourage you all to do that too, because if I can, then so can you. Thank you so much.
So I want to give you this certificate as recognition. And, again, we are so excited to continue to watch your journey as an author, and we will have fans all over this district as we watch the great things that you do.
Thank you so much.
Well, I just wanted to comment. I've known Smriti for several years now and have known that she's gotten, she's a hard worker, and she's had great support from her family. But what I most appreciate about tonight is you stood up here and you encouraged your peers to follow their dreams and do it too. And so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. Smriti, did you get a picture?
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you? Okay. Do you want to hold this? Just have it for you. Okay. That sounds great.
And where can we find it?
Yeah.
You can find it on Amazon. I believe it's $1,299 for the paperback, and it's $9.99 for the Kindle version. And I've actually ordered about 10 author copies, and I'm selling them for a discount of $10. So I think, I think we'll give you the details about that. I think that's what my mom said.
And business, too.
Thank you.
Can I take a quick picture?
Oh, absolutely.
I suppose.
Thank you so much for everything you have.
Perfect. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Wonderful. Well, if you can believe this, we do have marketing, business, author, public speaker. Wow, amazing. Well, there is another student, if you can believe this, at Prior Lake High School, another sophomore, who was unable to be with us this evening, who is also a published author. So Caleb Smith was unable to be there, but he has received national attention recently for both his business and his new book, Peace Bunny Island. So we also have another student, and again, this is unbelievable and a huge celebration of the amazing work of our students, of our teachers and our staff, and of the families who support them in achieving their dreams. So congratulations very much. We have one other portion of Laker Pride this evening. Tonight, we also celebrate. This is our student representative to the school board, Abby Hafferman's last official school board meeting with us. So we wanted to have an opportunity to congratulate her, to recognize her, and to thank her. And as part of that, as I was thinking about the comments that I wanted to share about Abby this evening, I was jotting down a bunch of notes. And then I went to the letter of recommendation that I wrote for her for a couple different scholarships. So I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I do, Abby, get over here and stand by me. Please. But I do want to read just a couple of the lines, because to lead a school district as the student council president at any time is a huge task. We ask for leadership and dedication and constant communication, and we've had amazing students who have delivered over and over and over from our high school. We've never had a student who has led the student body during the pandemic. And the poise and the grace and the resiliency of Abby set a standard for others to follow and an inspiration for me to lead through. So I just want to share a couple of the things that I wrote about Abby. It's a little embarrassing, but it's okay. Working closely with Abby has allowed me the opportunity to observe her effective communication skills, her initiative, her action-oriented mindset, her commitment to equity, and her capacity to serve and positively impact the school district. I wrote about the first meeting, the first student council meeting that I watched Abby take the reins of, August of 2020, in Dan Patch Stadium, because we had to be social distance, and we couldn't be inside, with masks, with a whole bunch of new, young members who weren't really sure what they were getting into. And what Abby did with confidence and grace is she set a standard of, we can do this. We can embrace this obstacle, and we can create and do amazing things for students. And I know throughout the year, there has been disappointment after disappointment after disappointment in planning events and getting them canceled, and trying to do this, but the restrictions wouldn't allow it. So that first meeting where I watched her gather a team, break people into small groups, and empower them to plan and lead, I think speaks a lot about your leadership and your inclusive spirit of honoring everyone's work. Abby exemplifies an innovative mindset. One of the goals, along with being an author, but one of the goals that I've had as a superintendent for the past six years was to create a student superintendent advisory council. And until this year, with Abby, it's not happened. So Abby and I talked about this goal the past summer, and Abby did not wait for me. Abby ran and went with the idea, and we worked together. But by the time we had finished a conversation about what we might be able to do, she was ready to do it and had the process in place. So we started a group of 16 students, and we met throughout the year, sometimes in person, sometimes virtually. But through that entire process, I was again able to be reminded of the power and the importance of having student voice around me as I make decisions for our district. So it was amazing. And finally, one of the last lines, I could go on and on and read this whole thing to you, but one of the last lines says, "My interactions with Abby Hafferman have made me a better person and a better leader, and I can think of no greater compliment to give someone." We are going to miss you, and we have been bettered because of your presence with us. I know this has been a really hard year, and I am so proud of how you have led and how you have helped others. And we're not supposed to do that. Joe, I'm sorry, I know I wasn't supposed to hug her.
Joe.
All right. Next up is personnel items. Jim.
Good afternoon or evening. Board chair, board members, Superintendent Stallow. There's one personnel item for tonight. I bring forward, excuse me, I bring forward the job description for the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Heard those two words in the last presentation. This was the new position that was presented as part of the budget proposal and approval at the April board meeting. As discussed, this position will be funded from the additional funds levied from Achievement Integration Program. The Director of Equity and Inclusion will be a senior leadership level and report directly to the superintendent. That will afford the administrator the responsibility and authority to oversee many district-level programs, such as Achievement Integration, the American Indian Education Program, and a few others. Also, they'll have the authority to supervise and evaluate staff and lead and collaborate with other district administrative leaders and staff on equity issues. Since I sent out the board packet on Thursday, we've continued to elicit feedback from staff, and we've incorporated a few changes. I know Martha sent out a revised one with a couple in there. If you want me to, I can go through each of them and why we did it, but you also saw it in the board packet, so let me know what you're, you want me to walk through each of those? No?
Well, let's have a motion, and then we'll get discussion.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Director of Equity and Inclusion?
So made.
By Mary?
Seconded.
By Jonathan. Any questions? Any questions on anyone? I guess, why don't you just highlight a couple of the little tweaks that we did?
Okay, so one of them that was a bit confusing, I think, is that we put, we had on their classroom teaching experience preferred, but we're requiring administrative license. Well, in order to have an administrative license, you have to have three years of teaching experience. So that was just one that was highlighted that we were like, yeah, that's confusing, so we changed that. There's a couple other ones in there where we added staff to the descriptor in order to not just support students, but to support staff. And then we struck out a word in a couple of places so that we weren't too restrictive in our language, because we just don't anticipate going forward what other groups might fall under that underserved student population. So those were the changes.
Is there any other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Okay, there's no unfinished business this evening. New business, Strategic Direction 6, engaging students, parents, families, community...
engaging students, parents, families, community to strengthen the culture of respect and inclusion. And this, I believe, is our annual stakeholder. Sure, right? Chrislyn, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Superintendent Stallow and directors. Actually, uh, Dr. Stallow will kick off our presentation this evening.
I will kick it off and, uh, good evening again, everyone. Um, tonight, Chrislyn Goodman, and I will be sharing an update on our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' fifth annual stakeholder survey. Uh, we questioned whether we should administer the survey this year during a pandemic in a year when we have sent out a lot of surveys and communication and we know that people are really busy. But we predicted, uh, we also predicted that the response rate would be low and in, um, some of our satisfaction levels would dip. However, we value stakeholder perspectives and because of the pandemic, we wanted to and knew that we needed to listen to our stakeholders and the ideas that they had for how best to plan forward. We don't know how we're doing if we don't seek input and feedback from stakeholders. So the survey aligns with our strategic plan, with our core values, and with many of our strategic directions. Um, we use this data annually, um, to help us with our site and school improvement plans as well as our department improvement plans. The goal we set around the strategic direction to engage students, parents, families, and community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion was to add focus groups to the annual surveys. So tonight, as Chrislyn talks about the, um, the original questions of the survey, she'll also talk a little bit about the focus group. So with that and much gratitude to Chrislyn uh, for the work that she has done on this, I will hand it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stallow. I will start with some changes that we made to the stakeholder survey this year. So to make the survey more attractive and focus it on the most important feedback, we reduced the total number of items on the survey for each of the groups responding. And those groups are students, families, and staff. To be able to continue year-to-year comparisons, we maintain survey items which appear on the district's scorecard. We also added items that address the pandemic and social emotional aspects. Looking for more detail and stakeholder perceptions of what worked well this year in social emotional aspects, the number of open-ended items was increased to three. And as you heard Dr. Stallow say, focus groups were important this year to get varied and wide perceptions. We interviewed 20 groups of students, families, staff, and administrators in our focus groups, and about 180 people were included. I will now move on to reporting about the participation rate in the survey. We're really pleased to see that in this challenging year, so many people took the time to give feedback, especially in this year where the participation rates were below where they had recently been. The introduction of the focus groups really helps us give a clearer picture of community perception. It's always important to view these results in context, especially this year where educators and students experience significant and profound changes in teaching and learning as well as social and emotional well-being. The following slides give a brief overview of results from students, families, and staff. A focus this year has been to make sure students feel safe and connected. The rates of students feeling safe and secure and connected to at least one adult at their school are within two percentage points of previous years. When we see an overview of parent and guardian feedback, parents and guardians believe their children can do well and report that administrators are accessible to a high degree. Parents and guardians also shared their perceptions of the effect of this past year as well as their concerns about their children's education and staying connected to their friends. Staff results show that we still have a strong majority of staff proud to be with our brand even after this hard year. I'm now going to take you through graphs which show trends over the past five years and provide us with data that is going to help us improve. I'm going to be going quickly, but I'm always available to answer questions. So we focus our improvement around the strategic directions, which is how the summary results are organized. We'll start with student engagement items and their trends over the past five years. In the following graphs, gold depicts elementary students. Parents and guardians are represented by dark blue and secondary students are in teal. This graph shows student and parent guardian perceptions of students liking to go to school. Represented here are student perceptions of their culture, religion, or ethnic heritage respected by other students, which decreased this year. As we think about and plan for school experience going forward, we're responsible for every child feeling cared about and appreciated and are very invested in the student experience. The next slides are aligned with the learner experience. Notable is the change in our secondary students reporting about their teachers knowing how to teach so that they can learn. This speaks to the exceptionally high quality of teachers we have, the flexibility that they have displayed, and the way they were able to innovate and personalize learning, adapting through multiple learning modes this year. Throughout this presentation slides, the orange denotes certified staff and the gray educational support staff. In this year that we needed people to be flexible, they were, and they innovated every step of the way. Next, we will look at survey responses about a safe environment. In this year that we as a district knew it was so important to feel cared about, is really positive to see student connections staying so strong. It was our goal all year that students feel safe in our buildings through this pandemic and we were happy to have been able to follow through on that. Our last area is around engagement. It's important that staff feel pride for PLSAS and focus groups and conversations with staff will help us explore the increase in educational support staff and decrease in certified staff ratings on this item. And we'll now move into items referring to school board and superintendent. Responding to feedback about past surveys, this year we added a new response for parents and guardians who might not feel informed about the superintendent or school board. And that is the unsure category. So parents and guardians could respond with strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or the new response, unsure. So this graph shows responses about vision and mission. Here are responses about encouraging community and staff collaboration. And overall satisfaction is depicted here. Superintendent feedback is shown here around vision and consistent goals. And here is overall satisfaction with the superintendent. We'll now shift our focus to open-ended responses from the survey and focus group interviews. I want to thank every individual who responded. This information really helps us when we're making decisions. We're going to be looking at what the community's responses were in this next section and I want to, um, make sure that it's reflected that there was a really wide range of experiences, um, and opinions. For the purposes of the study, the focus groups were made up of around 10 individuals from specific groups who were chosen at random to participate in interviews. Those 20 groups included students at the elementary, middle, and high schools, PLSAS employees from every building and employee group, and families from many backgrounds. Seven peer coaches, specialists, bicultural liaisons, and myself set up and facilitated focus group interviews, mainly via video conference, and we recorded themes. Focus groups allowed more nuanced and detailed feedback than just a survey can provide because participants can be asked about the why behind their responses. The themes you'll see in this presentation are from all participants. So it combines the open-ended items from the survey as well as the responses in the focus group interviews. So these are some of the themes that emerged. These two questions appeared in both the open-ended items of the survey and in the focus groups because we're most interested in the lessons we can learn from this year and how we plan for school in the fall. The themes that emerged from all these groups are following. So, uh, this was the what worked well this year. Overarchingly, this need for flexibility, um, and the way that flexibility was delivered upon to meet student needs came up repeatedly and I wanted to emphasize that there. Um, and as we were really excited to learn about what our stakeholders are looking forward to this fall as we plan, um, and work to ensure flexibility, engagement, and support as we move forward. This item is from the open-ended part of the survey. We wanted to get at what students feel like when they're cared about. And we see the importance of feedback, being connected, and acknowledging that different students have different needs answering that question. Staff responded to what they need to feel successful at work and we heard how important support and collaboration are to staff as well as staff feeling empowered and trusted. These last slides report themes found in the focus group as students, staff, and families responded to social emotional support needed, especially noting transitions students go through from one level to another, um, as well as building social emotional supports right into each school day. As we asked stakeholders about how to increase engagement, equity, and inclusion in the focus groups, and one of the things that we heard about was that flexibility with consistency coming back through again. Uh, that means utilizing personalized learning and being responsive to the individual needs of our students by maintaining high expectations for all. The response is the last question reiterated to us the importance of student choice in learning. Uh, the next steps that happen with these results are that over the next few days, we will be sharing the results with stakeholders. Uh, this helps us to determine, uh, goals. The results of the survey help us determine, determine goals which will shape our actions and the plans, um, that we will be making for the fall. And of course, we will be reviewing this process, um, for the stakeholder survey next year.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, this is report only, so I'll just open it up if anyone has any questions, comments, anything? Um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I think, and there's a lot of slides. I turned over was one of the first ones. Um, but where we talked about staff and being able to basically pull off what they pulled off this year about being flexible and, and how, that was in the 90s, I think. I mean, pretty amazing, um, from, I think, our stakeholders, from our parents. So, I mean, I think everyone knows how awesome our staff is, but, um, I think, I just want to highlight that, that that's incredible given the year and I think, um, kudos to them because they have pulled off an amazing thing, um, over the last, whatever, 15 months. Um, and then I think as far as the participation, actually, when you look at the number of respondents, it's still 6,000. I mean, I anticipated it'd be down, um, you know, and it was, but honestly, I, I'm really kind of pleased with the, with the information. I think there was, I liked the fact that we did the stakeholder groups and got into small groups and got more detailed feedback. Um, I think it's really important. I do think, um, still are strong scores in the social emotional piece, which I think has been really critical this year too. I mean, obviously, learning, we're here to educate, but, um, to see that come out very strong, um, is commendable for everyone. Um, so, thank you. Yeah. I'd just like to add a thank you to the, the staff and the students and the parents who took the survey. Again, we, we take it seriously and our administrators actually disclosed at midnight on Tuesday night, I believe, and Chrislyn had preliminary data for administrators at nine o'clock on Wednesday morning. So we, uh, started to look at it already, but our administrators now will work with their departments, their staff, they're building instructional leadership teams as they, you know, look and ask questions and, um, you know, try to continue to set goals that will ensure that we get better results, not just with perception data, um, but with our achievement data and our social emotional data and all the, the data that we triangulate in that balance scorecard. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up is the review of the summer programs including targeted services and special ed. Mr. Holmberg, this is a report only as well?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board. Dr. Stallow here this evening to give a very quick overview on some of the things we have in, in store for the summer. Um, it actually is a nice segue into the information that was just shared. Um, we're going to talk about a couple of different things with targeted services, special education programs, community ed plans, and then time for if there are any questions. So again, purpose tonight is just to give you a broad overview of some of the things that we're planning. Uh, we are in the process of still registering and going through those, those planning phases, but to give you a sense and also too to the listening public that, you know, as, as you're looking at summer plans and summer programs, there may be some information that you as well can take from this. So, uh, for targeted services, the programming is designed, uh, to meet the needs of the whole child where we are focusing on academics as well as social emotional learning. The, the format of, format of it is highly engaging and hands-on. So it's not a sit and get, but really a couple of years ago, there was a shift into the focus of the program. So it is more project-based, aligned with, uh, more, um, projects, uh, experiential learning where they're applying those academic skills. They're available to students entering grades, uh, one through eight who meet criteria and referred by their teacher. And the programs are offered at four sites, uh, Hamilton Ridge, Jeffers Pond, Westwood, and Twin Oaks Middle School. And there's a bit of a strategic approach to that. We are, uh, working to combine and find, uh, commonality or wraparound programs for our targeted services through our kids company as well. And so that's really, uh, a strong partnership that's emerged and we're finding some, uh, great opportunity there. The session dates you see there, uh, happen over the course of two weeks, which we find is, uh, with feedback from our parents, to be very much appreciated. Uh, students can be in one or both, uh, at the same time. And when you're thinking about families, take, trying to find some family time and vacation, this gives them some options as well. We currently have about 140 student, elementary students registered, but registration is still open. Uh, closes on the 20th and then middle school is offering a program from July 12th to August 6th. Again, interdisciplinary focused and that, uh, registration, uh, is also open as well. Special education, uh, extended school year is available to students who are eligible, who are on an IEP and the IEP team has determined the student's eligibility. It's based on their individual needs, uh, specific critical skills important to their overall progress on the IEP. And so as we look at this past year, I know, uh, Deb Anderson and her staff, as well as the principals and case managers have been looking at the overall progress of students during the course of the pandemic. And so that is very closely, uh, aligned with the programs that are being developed for the summer as well. Offered at three sites, the high school, Hamilton Ridge, and Redtail. And you can see the dates there, three to four days per week. Uh, we currently have approximately 30 students planning to attend. And our extended school year is staffed by our PLSAS staff, special ed teachers, and paraprofessionals. And so students who are not served through extended school, school year are, uh, able to be served and attend our targeted services. So if they're IEP for whatever reason, uh, they're not recommended for extended school year, they are able to attend, uh, targeted services as well. Community ed, uh, under the leadership of LeAnn Wyrock and her staff. You know, again, part of the, the robust, uh, nature of, of the program is trying to meet families and communities and students where they're at. And so, uh, you see some early childhood things that are, that are in the process of, uh, being scheduled and created. Youth programs, camp options, um, all the things that we, we look at and take for granted that we were not able to offer last summer. And so we anticipate that there's, that there's going to be, um, you know, some demand for these. You know, families looking for options for their kids in the summer, uh, from swimming, driver's ed. Again, looking for ways that the, you know, being there for the community, for the community to connect with them and, uh, participate. You also see adult programs as well. Again, it's important that we have programs across the board for our families so that as a school, they find a connection to what we're offering. And then you see the kids company, school age care program as well that we offer, uh, to families. So with that, a very quick overview, um, you know, I think the takeaway here is, is we're still in the process of planning and registration. It's not too early for families to register or to inquire um, or to look into these programs for community education. And so again, there's more to come and I would anticipate, you know, we will also do a, uh, report, I believe in September, just to sort of give a full recap, uh, at the board's discretion about summer programs in these areas as well.
Okay. Um, this is report only as well. Um, is there any questions? Amy?
Um, I'm just wondering, maybe you said this and I missed it, but relative to years past, is this pretty in line with what we've offered or are we doing some new programming? Is it kind of TBD because of the unsure situation with the pandemic at the time of planning?
So for special education, uh, Deb Anderson put in here that the numbers are, these are typical numbers compared to years past. Uh, with targeted services, um, it has been, I think, two summers since we shifted a bit of our program approach. And so I guess I wouldn't say it's, it's on, it's on a trend. Uh, but I think 140, our numbers are similar to where we have been in years past. And then as far as, uh, community education, you know, last summer, again, uh, very little opportunity to offer some of those things. And so again, I think, you know, they're always interest-based, you know, when families sign up for those, we offer those programs. And so, uh, again, LeAnn does a great job with her staff in putting out these options for families and, and when we get families And when we get families to sign up, we provide those classes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just have a question, kind of as relates to community ed, because I know a lot of these changes kind of were just happening. As far as a timing perspective, though, of getting the message out, you know, about these things, I'm assuming this is a slightly tighter timeframe than normal?
Yes.
Are we, you know, doing more blast, or are we trying to get that information out? Or how quickly do we think we can? I'm just, I mean, as, you know, as programming comes alive, I want to make sure people have enough time to register and, you know what I mean, and get the word out.
The programs that we offer are always subject to the guidance that we've received from the governor and stay safe. And so, we have some very recent news last week from the governor about what we're able to provide and offer and do. And all of our programs are subject to the trajectory of the pandemic. And so, you know, we do have families that are asking and seeking, and in our communication, our communication is always the caveat of, we're able to offer these under the guidance that we're allowed to, given what the governor's executive order is allowing us to offer as well.
Right.
So, you know, it sounds like that we will hopefully get to a point where we can sort of take that disclaimer off.
Yeah.
But I don't think we're quite there yet.
Well, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, in light of changes and recent changes, you know, we sent out the magazine and we get, and things change, I mean, obviously, as we all know. So, I'm just saying, is there, are we getting enough time to be able to get the classes, to get things, to get the words out so that, I mean, because a lot of these offerings for youth, June, people are going to be looking for stuff for their kids to do. It's May 10th.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's a tight timeframe, that's all I'm saying. And I just want to make sure we're making inroads and communicating it.
Yeah, I think from the communication standpoint, we're utilizing all of our current communication channels and information out and listservs and information. So, people are paying attention and people are asking, so.
Right. And, yeah, in light of the new information, is there more opportunities now than there were two weeks ago? Or not necessarily? That's all I'm saying.
I think from the planning standpoint, our hope and our intent is that we're able to continue to offer things that parents have expressed interest in the past, as well as, you know, the work that LeAnn has done with her staff to say, you know, what are those programs that we're going to be offering to the communities? So, that would be the direction that we've been taking in planning.
Okay. Jonathan, do you?
I was just going to say, from committee meeting last week, LeAnn did report that classes are filling, they're getting good response. And one of the creative things that was done this year that I think will be really helpful is in the catalog, there's actually a section of what is being offered when, as opposed to just simply, here's a class and in it, it says the dates. There's actually a spot where you can go say, hey, I might have some time on July 10th to 20th, what's available? And it's listed that way. So, I just, I think they've, I think they've made good changes from what I heard last week. It's, they're doing a brisk business.
Good.
And they're filling up, doing well.
That's what I want to hear. All right, awesome. Okay, thank you.
I had a question, Joe. We do have a lot of secondary students, particularly high school students, that struggled this year. What are the opportunities for them for, let's say, summer school credit recovery, things like that?
So, yes, that, we continue to have credit recovery through our, our high school runs their program through the ALC and Dave Brown. So, we have students that are registering for that as well, so that they're able to get those credits, so they get back on track. We've also been working on a rising ninth and 10th graders program, where students who may need a smaller setting to be able to come in and participate in that learning so that they can get an early start on credits as well entering into the high school. So, those plans are in place as well. And students work with their guidance counselors and with Mr. Brown and his staff on registering for those courses.
Okay. I just want to clarify, though, because not all those kids would be in the, have an IEP or would be eligible for the ALC normally. It's just that this year was unusual. So, is that all falling under one umbrella, or how is that?
So, with special education, that would be according to extended school year with, with, under Deb Anderson. Targeted services is for grades one through eight. So, for high school, it would be under the credit recovery umbrella of working with their counselors and teachers in order to get back on track with graduation requirements.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the technology levy planning presentation.
Very good. Well, as Director of Technology, Marcus Malazo, and Executive Director of Business Services, Julie Sink, make their way to the podium. I just want to kick things off this evening and set the stage and the purpose for this presentation. So, a few months ago, the board provided direction to administration to continue to plan for technology levy and to bring a proposal to you later on, and we'll be showing you that timeline later today. So, as part of that, we want to share with you a technology levy planning presentation. So, I want to be really clear. This is not the technology levy presentation. This is a planning presentation, some of which you've seen as we planned over the last and talked about this over the last year, with updated information as we keep getting more eyes on it and more information. We know that as part of that action for planning, we also have engaged with the Morris Leatherman Community Survey. Peter Leatherman will be with us on May 24th, sharing input from that survey, which will help board members in their decision-making moving forward. Well, also, we've been talking about what other data or input we may need to collect in the next month from students, from staff, from families, as we continue to plan. And then it would be our intent, and you'll see this in the timeline as well, that we would bring forward a draft proposal to you in June for your discussion and direction as we move toward a proposal to you in July. So, with that, I'll hand it off to Director Malazo, who has done a whole lot of work, excellent work on this, along with Julie Sink. And we'll go ahead and let them present this evening and see what questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Members of the school board, good evening. My name is Marcus Malazo. I'm the Director of Technology for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'm here with the Executive Director of Business Services, Julie Sink, to go through our technology levy planning presentation. So, what we have in store for this evening is a brief recap of district technology. We'll be talking about additional revenue themes and long-term strategies, in this case, our technology levy planning. And then we'll also be presenting some staff and student feedback that we have received through surveys and student focus groups. Who we are, I know that's tough to read, so I'll go through it. The Information Technology Department consists of myself. I have an administrative assistant. I have two data systems people. One is a technician, one is a, she is a specialist. So, I want to be very clear in those terms. One is a technician, one is a specialist. So, and they have very different roles. I also have a network systems specialist and a network systems technician. They're all things network and infrastructure. I have two technology specialists, and they are all things mobile devices. So, anything that involves MacBook Airs, iPads, Chromebooks, those two technology specialists are in charge of all things mobile devices. I also have two field technicians, and they are level one and two field tech support. They go around to the buildings and troubleshoot issues with classroom AV equipment or other services that we support. And then I also am in charge of the district print shop. So, anything sent to district printing, those two print specialists are under my purview as well. And that makes up our technology department. Our technology department is part of a larger team of teaching and learning, and you can see that org chart there. What we support? We support 1.6 million square feet of spare, square feet of space, 8,700 students, E through 12. That number is dynamic, as we know. 700 plus staff members, hardware, desktops, laptops, mobile devices, access points, network switches, file servers, voice over IP phone systems. That's all under what we support. And then software, we categorize that as instructional systems database as well. So, we support it. This is an interesting slide. This is our, this is what we've lived in the past two years, coming up on two years. So, I want to take some time to explain this slide. In 2019, 2020, we had a eight, 12, one-to-one throughout the district, and every kid, grades eight through 12, had an iPad. And then we also had a two-to-one deployment for iPads, whether they were in a classroom cabinet or in a cart. Students K through seven had that, had those devices relatively available. We also had Chromebook cards, K through 12, and we had a lot of Chromebook cards. And I'll speak to that here in a little bit. Pandemic hits, and we are given our marching orders to make sure that every student has a device for, to support distance learning and hybrid learning. So, we took apart every cart we had in the district, and we redeployed everything that we had. So, now grades K through one have iPads. Grades six through 12 also have iPads. And I'll speak a little bit more about what we did with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade iPads as well, because we had to deploy iPad minis. They were seven-plus years old. You've heard me say that multiple times. Well, we'll speak to that. Grades two through five, since we didn't have enough iPads to round out the entire district, we had to pull those Chromebook cards apart and distribute those to grades two through five, which is great. I'm thrilled that we had enough devices for every student to support our distance and hybrid learning. But pulling carts apart and has an impact on day-to-day operations and how students access technology. So, if we had Chromebook cards at the elementaries, and then each middle school had a number of Chromebook cards, and the high school had a large number of Chromebook cards, if students were in the iOS environment and they were working on iPads and apps with their teachers, that's great, they have those devices. But if they wanted to use Microsoft 365 or Google Workspace for Education Plus, they would go grab a Chromebook and work on that device for document creation. Chromebooks are great because they have a physical keyboard and they sync really well with G Suite, or now it's called Google Workspace for Education. Those devices are gone. They're no longer in carts. They're not available for our middle school students because we had to redeploy them to, to our grades two through five. So, it's great that we had the devices, but it also has a, has an impact on what we're doing at the middle schools and the high schools as well. Okay? This is a slide that breaks down that device in 2019, 2020. It's extremely granular, but again, we had a two-to-one iPads, grades K through five, iPad cards, grades six through seven, iPads, one-to-one, eight through 12, and then Chromebook cards, district-wide. And then this slide shows you the breakdown of every type of device we had at those grade levels, plus the number of carts we had available as well. I've received a question, why do you have so many Chromebook cards? Reason why we had so many Chromebook cards is because in years past, we've had wired desktop workstations or labs. In the high school, in every pod, we had a wired desktop PC lab. When we started, the equipment started to age, we had space restrictions and crunches on our spaces, and we were pivoting to more of a learning, flexible learning spaces. Those labs came out. And every time we replaced a lab or pulled a lab, we replaced it with a Chromebook cart. So, that's why you see those cart numbers where they are. 2020, here's where we ended up. Now, we have a K-12 one-to-one, whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook. And again, this slide provides a breakdown of what device is at each grade level. Through users and cares funding, we were able to replace a large number of iPads at the middle school level. So, grades six through eight now have an eighth-gen iPad. They were, they did have those iPad minis I keep referencing that are seven-plus years old. So, anytime we have an opportunity to pull those from our inventory and e-recycle them, we're doing so. So, the only iPad mini deployment currently is at our kindergarten. We have a plan for that as well for next year. What's the impact of our K-12 one-to-one? It's had a huge impact, especially on our Laker learning compass, which really advancing personalized student-driven learning. This K-12 one-to-one has contributed in that area. It's helped make our teaching and learning more personalized, purposeful, and empowered. So, that whole theme of anytime, anywhere learning, students have devices, we're not bringing the devices or the students to the devices, we brought the devices to the students, that has a huge impact on these areas. In specific, what impacts did it have in grades E through five? What we listed here was some of the things that we had been using in the past, but through this one-to-one, really elevated and embedded what we were doing, whether it's our learning management system, which is CSO, or our new platform with iXL, which is standard-driven self-paced skills and practice. We have just an example of the Google Workspace for Education Plus, which is formerly known as G Suite. And then we also have some just examples of our e-content areas for elementary kids. The next slide is similar, but it's also, our LMS for the secondary kiddos is SchoolG. We're using iXL in a number of areas, G Suite, or Google Workspace for Education Plus, and some additional e-content areas like McGraw-Hill or TCI. So, having those devices in the hands of students has really accelerated that personalized learning. Our strategic plan, you've seen it. In years past, 21st century's technology skills was a call-out. A couple of years ago, we had that community roundtable at the high school, and one of the themes that came out of that was technology is embedded in everything you do. You have it called out as 21st century skills, but it's real, it's embedded in all these strategic directions. So, the decision that came out of that, that roundtable was, don't have it as a call-out, but make sure it's embedded in everything that you do, which it is now. And that's why we're here tonight to talk about the purpose of a tech levy. A tech levy at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools would provide funding for students and staff devices, instructional software, and network infrastructure, additional technology staffing. The benefits of a voter-approved technology levy are as follows. It's in alignment and support with the district strategic plan and the Laker learning plan, which I just showed to you. It guides our work in advancing personalized student-driven learning. It provides equitable access to instructional technology for all students. It helps facilitate a four-year replacement cycle. If we're talking about a voter-approved 10-year technology levy, we can get three replacement cycles out of that 10-year period. And having that voter-approved tech levy would help facilitate that replacement cycle. I just jumped ahead. It provides a sustainable funding for 10 years to acquire, maintain infrastructure. It's not only about devices, it's also about the things in our network switches. It's about the access points in our switches to make sure that everything is up and running and providing the services that kids need to utilize these devices for learning. And then it also provides funding to sustain enhanced school safety, whether it's our Raptor systems or our camera systems, or expanding our capacity of our camera systems, whether, it's not just the ability to add more cameras in more areas, but you also want to increase the amount of time that you have for recording as well and retain that information. So, it does help support our crisis management plan. Well, as part of this planning presentation, what we're talking about is areas of focus for a potential tech levy, our student and staff devices, instructional software and e-curriculum, network, network infrastructure and operational software, and technology staffing. I'm going to hand it over to Julie. She's going to talk some budgets and numbers.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, Dr. Stallow, and board members. I will talk about the budget. We do have a five-year technology budget that we're looking at for the past five years. And you can see it's kind of gone up and down a little bit. You have to remember, and maybe Stacy, you can remember this, just a few, five, six years ago, we actually started a one-to-one program in grades eight through 12. And so, it hasn't been very long that the district has had this type of technology budget and uses of our technology. And so, you can see back in 2015 and 16, it was almost $3 million. And over the past five years, it's increased to 3.5 million. And you can see the jump in 1819 and 1920. And those budgets were simply because we had additional needs for infrastructure in 2018 and 19, and the continued expense in 2019, 20 for the laptops for our staff. And so, that's why the increase, that you see those increases in those years. We have just a short comparison of the last two years. You can see that we have our 2020, 21 revised budget, and we're showing the budget because this year isn't complete yet. But we're showing the actual activity from the prior year of what we actually spent. And as you can see, our general fund does support all of our technology. And so, all the infrastructures, the general fund expenditure, all of our classroom and teacher devices, all the devices for students, all are coming from the general fund. And so, we have our staffing included in there as well. And there's two other components, our assessments and our e-content subscriptions. Those don't come from our technology budget, they're part of our curriculum budget. And so, but we wanted to include them here because they are a very important part of why we have our technology in the district. And so, you can see, we are looking at a 3.7 versus a last year of a 3.3. If you go back to the previous slide, you can see that we had a budget in 1920 of 3.6, but we only spent the 3.3. And so, what we do in this district, in which you as board members- And so what we do in this district, in which you as board members know that we allow staff, if they have a need for something that they know they'll have a big purchase, they may carry over their budget from one year to the other. And so you can see that Mr. Malazo did carry over his budget, and you can see that's why you're seeing a revised budget. A little bit different and a little bit higher this year. And then also, in addition, and Marcus referred to it, was the CARES funding. We did use CARES funding, some of our CARES funding, which had to be spent on things that weren't included in our current budget and that were in additional need, which we knew that we needed to update those iPads at the time. And so we did utilize those funds for that purpose. And again, those funds needed to be spent by December 30th of last year. And so we did quickly order the necessary technology for our students to have a successful, successful educational experience in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Our combined technology budget for FY 2021, and you can see mainly our technology budget is in the blue. And then we also have those call-outs of the e-content and the assessments, and then the federal piece of that as well. This is just a comparison of other districts that have a technology budget. Where often, we look at Lakeville, Burnsville, Shakopee as our neighbors. And they have somewhere between almost seven, 2.8 to 3.8 million dollars in additional revenue they receive for technology purposes. However, we're often compared to other metro districts as well in terms of things that we are, we do. And so you look at Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, and Ryzetta, they are much higher. And going out for more for your Edina, they're at a four, or 6.5 million dollars, almost 6.5. They are actually going out for additional technology dollars, or they did. Did they pass it? I can't remember. Was it last Tuesday or is it tomorrow? It's tomorrow. Okay, so we will know after tomorrow if they pass that. And then, so you can see that it's significantly higher than what we are receiving, which we don't have a current technology budget. So it is hard to compare Prior Lake Savage Schools in terms of technology when their budgets are significantly higher than ours, simply because they have that additional funding stream that we, we do not.
Take this slide. This is a slide you've seen in previous school board presentations. It's just a comparison, staffing comparison, number of tech staff to, and staff to student ratio. So this is, this was from last October. We would like to update this slide for future presentations as well and get updated numbers on this one.
And this one, I'm so sorry. It is difficult to read this. As, as board members, you've seen this a couple of times. We have worked with our financial consultants, which is Ailers and Associates, in helping us determine what the amount would be if we were to go out for three different scenarios for a technology levy. The first column is the type of property that the district has, which is residential, as we know, that we have very little industry in Prior Lake Savage Schools. And so the majority of this does fall to our local taxpayers. And then we have the estimated market value. I do have on the bottom left, the district average home price, which is almost $400,000. Those of you on the board, remember that it was four short years ago, around $300,000. So it's quickly increased. The median home price is just under $355,000. So if we were to look at the average home price at $400,000, there are three scenarios, at 2.5 million dollar increase to a, for a tech levy, 3.5 million and 4.5 million. And so it's about $143 per year at 2.5 million on the average home price, $200 at 3.5 million, and $257 at the highest of three, of 4.5 million. And that's on an annual basis. Now that number does adjust every year depending on our enrollment. So it is based on student enrollment, and so that number does fluctuate. However, as many of you have seen in the district, as the district expands and grows, the school levy has gone down each year. Really dependent on your home value, but if your home value is going up significantly or you made major improvements, you may have seen an increase. But for the majority of homeowners, that number has decreased slightly.
Last couple of slides here deal with the staff and student device data that we conducted in the fall. I will start these slides by saying that our plan is to revisit this with our stakeholders and do something very similar in the spring to see, okay, you lived with a K-12 one-to-one for an entire school year. As your opinions change, what, what's new, what's different, what's the same? So we will be circling back with our stakeholders in regards to that. But this is the information from the fall of 2020. We surveyed staff and students, three through 12. And then we, myself, Mr. Homberg, Chrisland, went around to various grade levels throughout the district, various school buildings, and did focus groups, which is an absolute blast. I love meeting and talking with kids, and it's one of the highlights of my, of what I do. Anytime I get to speak with kids and hear their honest feedback on what they're using and how they're using it, what they like and don't like, it makes my day. So it makes my heart happy. So more of that, hopefully, in the future, when it's safe and of course, we, with all the protocols in place. But I'm looking forward to that as well. So, we did survey our staff. We sent it out via email. There's five items on there. We got 417 responses. You can see who responded there. Which devices are employees currently using? Majority are HP desktops or MacBook Airs. How are employees using devices? And you can see, just happy to note that it's all instructional reasons, right? And that, but it's, whether it's accessing textbooks or e-curriculum to accessing it or not. There's a variety of ways that our teachers are using the technology to deliver instruction. We also asked them, what else, what else do you need your devices to do? And one of the themes that we heard is that more screens, it's, it's nice to have a MacBook Air with a forward-facing camera, but having the ability to have a camera on you and then another screen for, if you're doing a Google Meet, to see your students, and then potentially another one for the presentation is that more screen real estate is one of the feedbacks we heard quite a bit. And having the ability to work from home, do remote work is a lot of the feedback that we heard. We sent our survey to our students through our LMSs, whether it's CSO or SchoolG. That was, had eight items and 1,733 responses. You can see who responded there as far as grade levels. We asked kids what devices they're using. It's Chromebooks or iPads. And what are they most commonly using their devices for? Very similar themes, but you see that the LMS is probably, accessing the LMS is their number one. Learning apps and, and Google Meets are right up there along with accessing our LMS. About those focus groups, so diverse participants. We wanted to know what their device use and experience was, their expertise. It was in-person. It was physically distanced and masked. And again, it was, we got great, great feedback from the students. I did not include the feedback in this presentation, but I can sum up the feedback really quickly. Is what we heard is having, having a device is number one. Having a physical keyboard was huge. Again, some of the having touch capabilities was great, forward and backward-facing camera. But that, having a physical keyboard for document creation was, was a reoccurring theme at all the grade levels that we, that we heard. You're shaking your head. Do you agree with it? Okay. Thank you. Planning timelines. So April 27th, the community survey went out through Morris Leatherman. May 5th, we presented to FLYR. I'm here tonight to present the planning technology levy presentation. May 19th, we'll be having, we'll be meeting with Mean Confer to review this planning presentation. May 24th, I believe Morris Leatherman will be here to review the survey results. June 14th, I'll present at a regular board meeting, the, the results of the survey, plus a technology levy recommendation to the board. And then on July 12th, at another regular board meeting, we'll ask for board approval or take action. And if, if approved, then the, the stakeholder technology levy information campaign would then commence. So those are our timelines, and we're at that point in the presentation.
Okay, thank you. A lot of information. We have questions, comments? I know I have one question, but does anybody, oh, Michael, go ahead.
I would just make comments. I appreciate all the thoroughness you put into this. And I know it bears repeating that it looks like right now, public schools are getting a lot of outside funding from government resources. But that funding does come through to different amounts to different districts. And it does come with restrictions and schedules and allocations. And so there can be a misperception that, boy, those public schools are just rolling in the money right now. And, and you can just, for very good reasons, other districts are getting higher allocations than we are. And so we are funding our technology through that general fund. In addition, our general fund continues to struggle because our state funding does not keep up with inflation. And currently legislators are discussing whether we will get any increase in our funding or a slight increase. And so we've got to anticipate that. And also I think it's, it's good to note that when we, we went out for the last referendum, technology was intentionally not a piece of it. We got our facilities built. We focused on what it would take for personalized learning. And at that time, we did not ask for community support to start increasing the technology. So now that those facilities are up and running, it'd be great to see what we can do to support that Laker learning compass and pull that out of the general fund if possible to really help our students excel to the best of their abilities. So thank you for the thoroughness of that presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, Amy?
I, I'll jump on board and just kind of reiterate what Michael said, which, which is that obviously we've been pulling this, these dollars from the general fund. And, and unless we do a tech levy, that's not going to change. And when we hold ourselves to such a high standard of education, we're the third-largest district in the state. We compare ourselves to some of the best districts in the state. But we're, we're on totally different playing grounds. We're not even in the same ballpark. So, you know, when we're looking at, pick, pick one on the slide. When you're looking at Edina that has over a $6 million tech levy, and they went out for two and a half million more, it's, I don't know how we can provide and keep providing technology at that level that, that they're doing. So if we want to keep our standards high, I think it is something we have to seriously consider.
Okay, I just had a couple of little questions. So I just wanted to confirm, you're going to do a technology department staff comparison? You're going to update that?
Yes.
Right, before the 12?
About the ratios?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that will come with us with some newer information. I just want to make sure. And then Julie, I had a question, and I apologize if I missed this part, but I was looking at the graph intently and using my bionic eyes here. But the tax rate to include on the ballot in that bottom section here, there's percentages. Is that new? Have we had to include a percentage on that bottom section? I just don't recall seeing that percentages.
Right. We have to by law have a percentage, and we do that all the time with anything that we go out for a vote for.
I think we did that with the referendum and the obsolete each year. Oh, is the percentage, it's reported as a percentage, not a dollar amount?
This isn't the percentage of what, it's the tax rate, and so how it spreads.
It's the tax rate.
Yes.
On the ballot, on the ballot was the part that screwed me up. I'm like, what?
Right.
So I, that's why I just wanted to clarify. I'm like, we don't put this number out there.
We do.
We do put the 4.7 or whatever.
But it's based, it's a tax rate. It's not, it's not saying that's the percent of increase.
Okay.
So it's the actual tax rate that that is based upon.
Okay. All right. Something else to confuse people?
The ballot will be very specific in how you are required to
Okay.
do that.
I just don't recall seeing that line at the bottom. That's what kind of freaked me out. I've been doing this a while, so, but you know, it happens.
And remember that this is a, this is a draft. And so if the board would decide to go out, we would get the final numbers. You know, things are changing quickly, so these numbers could change.
This is April 13th.
Yes. And we also had one of these last fall, and the numbers have dropped since last fall.
I was going to say, has it gone down? Because I seem like it has gone down since like November.
It has gone down.
Due to the
Tax base.
Number of people?
The tax base has increased, and so the amount gets spread across the higher tax base.
And just one more thing before Jonathan. And the difference here with the technology levy as far as what tax base it's off of, it's different, right, than the referendum?
On the net tax capacity, which means it includes seasonal and agricultural land. Whereas a referendum does not, an operating referendum does not.
Okay. Okay, Jonathan.
I, I think you said it during the presentation, and I was looking at numbers and I, I looked up and I'm like, I think you just said what I was wondering. Can you just clarify, you start talking about with the, the growth of the tax base. These numbers, when we think about a bond issue, as the tax base grows, we all see, again, if we haven't had significant improvements to our homes, over time, we tend to see that amount of tax actually decrease because it's the same number spread out over a larger tax base. Does a capital projects levy work the same way? Is that similar in that respect? Or is it based on a, is it a per-student, like a levy?
It is a per-student. So as we grow, that number will increase, which is why you see the odd numbers when you look at all of the other school districts. It's not just 3.5 or 4.5. It's an odd number with sometimes it has sense with it as well. Because it is based on what they're projecting for their, on their, for the student population on their levy certification. So it does adjust. But so does, so does an operating referendum. It's based on student population. So as that increases. But when you see a larger tax base and it's growing, then that gets spread across all of those homes. So if you think about four homes, just say the whole city compares to four homes, you had $100. They each pay $25. If you included, went up to eight homes, now you can see on $100, it's less for every, it's half. But, so as eight homes, if you wanted to keep at $25, you now could collect $200 of taxes. And everybody would still say the same, but the school district can now see $200 instead of 100. Very simple math here, so, but that's how that works with that ta, tax base going up.
Thank you.
I had one other question too. It's actually from Marcus. You had said K through second grade has those ancient iPad minis, right, right now currently? Aren't they like seven years old? K through two?
Only kindergarten has the iPad.
Only kindergarten. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry. But you said there was a plan for?
Yes, so our graduating seniors, what we would like to do is take those, when the seniors graduate, return their iPads. We'd like to repurpose those to the kindergarten and then use existing dollars in the next fiscal budget to buy new iPads for the sixth graders. Typically, when our seniors leave and graduate, we repurpose those to the new sixth graders. But in an attempt to get rid of those iPad minis and remove them from our inventory, we would like to repurpose those to the kindergarteners, the incoming kindergarteners. Remove those iPad minis from our inventory and e-recycle them in a responsible manner. And then purchase iPads for the new sixth graders for the next school year. So that, we, that also provides consistency with the type of device we would have, grades six, seven, and eighth. They would all be eighth-gen iPads. The eighth graders would take their iPads to ninth grade. They would also have an eighth-gen iPad as well.
Okay, all right.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were getting.
Yep, lots of moving parts. Our goal is to, to remove the iPad minis. Again, they're seven-plus years old.
Right.
They can't handle the iOS updates, so we would like to have them out of our inventory.
Right.
I, I am thrilled that they lasted this long.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we definitely used them.
We definitely get a return on our investment with those. But again, if you, once they, once devices stop handling the updates that the, the, you know, the vendors push out, you lose functionality. The batteries are going on them too.
Yeah, I'm sure. That's pretty old. Okay, so as far as timeline, I just see that we're doing this presentation again, do some smaller groups, meet and confer. And, and then so the next kind of input would be Morris Leatherman's on the 24th.
Yep, and then we'll, we'll, we'll ask the board to, you know, after they hear that input, to continue to give us direction. Because the, really the direction from May 24th in terms of getting an amount that the board is, is providing us direction and 24th in terms of getting an amount that the board is, is providing us direction and really then helps us with that draft proposal that would come forward in June.
Okay.
I think, I think Julie had a question.
Oh, Stacy had a question. Sorry.
And maybe I should know the answer to this, but when you surveyed students and you heard a theme about keyboards, where does that play a role in any of our ability to provide that? I mean, do, I'm assuming they don't have keyboards, correct?
They, they are, the Chromebooks do, they have a built-in keyboard, but that's grades two through five.
Yeah.
The iPads do not, so.
So if I'm in high school, I don't have a keyboard?
You do not have a physical keyboard, you have an on-screen keyboard, that is correct.
Okay. Is there a plan in place potentially to provide that? How's, how do you do that?
So, we, we're actually, in our, my department right now, we're, we're piling some external keyboards for existing iPads through two vendors. One vendor is the cases that we currently have, and then the other vendor is a comparable keyboard. The main difference is one uses the three-pin connector, which is great because it's a solid connection, the other one is Bluetooth, which can be a nightmare if you're trying to sync up all these Bluetooth keyboards with those devices. And I'd rather not go down that road. So we're looking at a physical keyboard that has, uses a three-pin connector and not Bluetooth. So we, we are doing some R&amp;D on physical keyboards. The other conversation we've had is, is in providing devices that have a physical keyboard. So I know that, and again, we'll, we'll get to that part where we start talking about devices. But in previous presentations to the school board, we, we presented six different options, and they were Chromebooks and iPads and MacBook Airs and all the above. So we will look at physical keyboards that are embedded in the tech, we will look at external keyboards that use a, a physical connector and not Bluetooth, because I really don't want to go down that path. Mary's shaking her head, no, you agree with me, Mary? Okay, no, thank you. All right, so that's, that's some of the things that we're doing right now to, to look at, to address that, hey, I need a physical keyboard and able to create documents efficiently and effectively.
Yeah, and I was just going, well, I'll say one thing. November or December's board meeting last year would be a good board, if you want to look at a board book, and it just gives you the options, and it, I mean, it's not current numbers, but it's a good idea just to kind of see what the kind of scenarios were.
I think the other important aspect of what Julie just asked and, and Marcus talked a little bit through was, it wasn't so long ago that we had computer labs.
Right.
Several in our high school. So when students needed for particular classes or in particular work, there were, there were labs, computer labs that they could go to that had the desktops that Marcus was talking about, and they could use those. So they had access, even though they had iPads, they had access to those computer labs. And then he talked about, as we worked more toward flexible learning, when we were replacing those desktop labs and to get, that was partially because of state, space, partially because the, you know, desktops were, were getting old. But as we replaced those, we replaced those with Chromebooks so that our students would still have access to devices with the keyboard. Then because we had to move and provide a solution for distance learning for K-12, all of those iPads, or I'm sorry, all of those Chromebooks had to be discarded and moved to other students. So, so Julie, I'm glad you asked that because we did have that solution until we got in a position that we needed to be a one-to-one district, and now it's going to be hard to not be in that position, so, thank you.
And the one other thing, too, to keep in mind, I think when this was all kind of transitioning, there was also requirements to have hardwired for testing.
Yes.
There was requirements about having labs, so what, you know, state-sponsored tests were given, we were given in the same environment and all that kind of stuff. And I'm assuming a lot of that's gotten changed up, but.
All wireless and on iPads or Chromebooks now.
But I mean, like, so when some of these decisions are being made, those were requirements, too, that you had to have physical space, that you had to have a kid at a desktop for a certain amount of time, and those labs were going busy with just that kind of thing, so. But obviously, as everything changes, changes.
The keyboards are pretty important because obviously the kids would sometimes go into those computer labs before and after school to be able to print stuff, and the Chromebook carts required them to return them at a certain time, so they didn't have that luxury. So the use of the keyboard went away, it didn't, it got partially replaced by the Chromebook carts, but not nearly enough. So it's going to be good to get keyboards to kids.
I have a question. So official, you are official. Okay, so if the goal is to get keyboards back to students, then why are we trying to get the new, or the incoming sixth graders iPads and not have them keep their Chromebooks that they have currently?
Question. So when, when you make a shift, thank you for asking that question, first of all. When, when we had to pivot and go to a K-12 one-to-one, we had access to iPads like we, like we discussed, but then Chromebooks were available for kind of grab and go. When we didn't have enough iPads, we, we made the decision, we're working with it, I'm sorry, I always do that. Just throw something at me, I always do that. I apologize. Sorry, Abby. Can everybody hear me now?
Yeah.
So when we pivoted, and we didn't have enough iPads, we had to make the decision, okay, what grade levels are going to get the Chromebooks? And through lots of conversations and discussions, it was two through five. But now we've just taken a new, a new device, a Chromebook with a different OS, and gave it to teachers who had previous experience with iPads.